Hello.
We can start whenever we want, kids. My, uh, my, uh, right hand and left hand are absentee. Something last minute came up with Shawna and Jason texted me earlier and I was like.
Hey, Matt.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
How's your semester going?
It's going well so far.
God, it was funny.
Yeah.
Uh, the finals week is that?
Speeding up.
It's review week.
Yeah, it's the first day of reviews.
Okay.
It's made to.
Thousand.
You can get better.
She's probably figured out.
There's a few different ones.
Is that right?
Yeah, they're meeting with, uh.
But yeah, just take a look.
Jessica has got them working hard.
Love to have you.
Do you know when Sarah sent that out?
Yeah, I think they'll, they're, they're interesting.
It was a little mysterious. There were two.
That's good.
I think a week ago she thinks she finalized.
So you know if they're gonna present the council? I think that was the idea.
I don't know what, you know, what's happening.
Thanks for not texting me back. It's okay.
So it was time to be.
I figured it out on my own.
Early enough this end of the budget cycle. Because some solutions may require.
I like fifteen gallons.
Some expenditure, so.
I do, I, uh, kid, you're not.
It's so like they have companies that will.
One of the bags had like a airline.
Yeah, that's one of the, you know, we, we looked at, for example.
I put it back, I guess I have to read it.
Like I know that the police department is priced out.
Like how did that itself see like?
Like kid, you're not.
Weird as thing.
There's an opportunity swap or something.
Yeah.
So otherwise.
They're the ones.
Yeah, but I don't.
So Julie and I, I got home and I knew it wasn't going below a refrigerator for twenty days.
And so they talk so well.
So.
I mean, I think they would.
We had three one gallon freezer bags.
I mean, of course, they would prefer not to.
First one sold and I put, uh, they were in freezer bags, so I like dug in the fridge and I pulled those out because they're actually the oldest, they're like nine years old. So I threw those in the freezer.
So I think we.
Because those are in freezer bags.
It's a problem, so I don't know what we would need to budget for.
We were gonna do it on, uh, was it Sunday? And then, I mean, we're bouncing to camera.
Yes.
As long as Sarah doesn't, it'll, they'll go on.
I had someone for ten year.
Yeah.
But she's like, hey, dad.
Yeah, and they were all those, which means that seven members of them were great.
Were we out here doing something in? So, hey, I'm.
It's like a box.
I was gonna ask you a lot, because I looked through ours and I was thinking.
And also they were telling me that the hunting was kind of.
They were doing.
They were discouraging.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Tried to cook on a fire.
But they just have to give away the deer that they've passed.
I was like, come on, like, I actually need.
Well, they have, I think, all the catches, so.
No, but it's actually been kind of fun.
Yeah, it's my buddy though. Oh, yeah, so I think.
My buddy from college, kid.
Yeah, there's limits on how many people they can.
Yeah, I was like, Grayson, we're going against.
That's some, I think.
So I have him help. Repentable.
I don't know.
Oh, and actually on Sunday, you'll appreciate this.
I don't think anything beyond.
Yeah, I'm, um, where are those ass leave funds on the tree? She goes, oh, your dad's house.
Those are, it's their, it's their.
I move out, you get new hobbies.
I don't like, I mean, I think.
And Sarah was quick to blame you. She's like, you can blame Sam because he got your dad's goat.
I'm not sure.
Well, so, so, you know, I've heard it there.
Any, thank you for my agenda.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
They don't take photographs.
So anyway, yeah, it's, uh.
The site, I tell them to take photographs.
I don't know, I'm, I think this is gonna be a throw out.
Now that I have the.
I'm gonna say it again, it was just like, whoa.
PDF is not gonna make, I just don't know.
You know, like, you're supposed to be like painting.
Rotten money. It's just. I just have the PDF.
But anyway, they're always nice.
Sign out.
And they're always like.
Yeah.
So many pretty things.
I mean, you can tweak the places, you can not tweak them.
I can evolve this.
I can give all this. People could provide because, you know, I cover myself, I just don't need it, you know?
You know where people go. This is what you're about.
I, I had to stop.
I mean, I stopped doing that, but it's just like, okay, here.
True.
That's true.
Yes.
I could always pull it up through three sixty five.
I, you know what I started doing, because I started putting together slide presentations.
It's like, here's a deliverable.
And I didn't.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I'm gonna do that. So infuriating.
Yeah.
Everybody ready?
I'm kinda like, you know, this is my second time with this class, so it's like, you know, I saw this, I mean, like, I saw a few things last year. So like, I type everything up, I'm like, I'm done.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter because I didn't write what I wrote.
Yeah.
Strategy.
All right, I will call tonight's Planning Commission meeting to order at seven o'clock. Uh, can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Berthrich with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Ruth with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any about, uh, opposition? Seeing none, uh, accept a motion to approve the minutes from January fourteenth, any additions, changes, corrections?
So moved.
Dr. Berthrich with the motion.
Second.
Ms. Webster with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I didn't hear any opposition. Uh, at this point, we'll entertain comments from members of the public that are, uh, I'm sorry, comments that are not related to agenda items, uh, from members of the public. So if there's something you'd like to, um, speak to in front of the commission, you have up to three minutes. You can come up, introduce yourself, we promise to be nice.
It's open mic night, uh, not for music, but for planning issues. So if there's something that you think should, you wanna communicate, it's kind of open mic night for people related to planning.
Really no takers, okay.
Okay.
Uh, seeing none, uh, reports from commissions, boards, committees and staff. Um, I think we started, I tend to start down there, so Mr. Arbuckle, you're on the hot seat.
All right, so Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, uh, met last month. Maybe essentially discussed the council's priorities and how they relate to transportation and started to formulate priorities for our boards in relation to those, hit those priorities. I think one thing we, we that stood out was talking about problem intersections in terms of pedestrians crossings and trying to prioritize those within the funding limits that we have to make recommendations to council in terms of how to proceed with, with identifying those intersections, of those intersection.
Perfect, thank you. Dr. Berthrich?
So Matt kind of talked about the Parking and Transportation Advisory Board, I don't think the climate, well, you can report on that. I guess from council, um, some of the things that, just to report back if you don't pay attention to what's going on council, although we now have, um, the Oxford Free Press that kind of talks about, a few things that we're talking about are, um, the Oxford Area Trail, what we call Phase Five, is the connection between the middle school and the high school. And then from basically that connection up to South Main, we've been able to do the Oxford Area Trail up to this point through using public lands, um, but we're now, um, working with a number of different landowners, securing easements for private lands and, and hoping to do that through voluntary agreements, but moving to the point where if we're going to make the trail happen, the time is kind of, the clock is ticking on our grant dollars. So there are the last couple of properties that we're, we're trying to resolve. So that's been, um, you'll see that on the council agenda. I guess I would share, this is not really, this is just from something that obviously you've been paying attention to. A lot, lots happening on Miami's campus in terms of changes to Miami's campus that are, are, are not really running through a planning process as we understand it. Um, so, you know, just, this is just me reporting from on campus, I'm on Campus Planning Committee, which is a committee that is not where decisions like that are made, you know? So, uh, a new arena and a hotel, both which, um, a hotel potentially a ninety-nine year lease on Cookfield and an arena potentially on Cookfield. Um, there was a site selection process through the Board of Trustees, kind of a presidentially appointed committee. Uh, we dodged a bullet with the city with it not being proposed on areas within our historic districts. Uh, but, but the, the proposed, um, development does have a lot of impacts on the city of Oxford that would relate. And I'm, I'm, I'm not sure to what degree the city of Oxford's been at the table with those, you know, or informed, yeah, informed but not at the table. So, anyway, that's just kind of a big thing going on. And, and I think probably Sam and Zach will talk about this, but just from the, the pub, you know, the, um, Oxford Today process of the code revision, there was a, um, a really, we had the consultants in town, is that just last week?
February twenty-sixth.
Okay, yeah, so, um, and so that was really great, work session, uh, a public session.
They're gonna report on.
They're gonna report on that, um, you know, I want to express gratitude to all the people who attended. Um, we had kind of a small group, but it was a key stakeholder group. Um, but, you know, as you report, I'm kind of curious, again, it's viewing from the Planning Commission, when planning commissioners beyond individuals will be engaged in the process and have stuff to provide input on, because I feel like we've got a lot of insight, so just curious when that interaction with the consultants may happen. Thank you.
Perfect, Ms. Webster?
So the, um, joint environmental committees did not meet, but I think I failed to mention that there was a December meeting. I didn't say that in January, and the main purpose of that meeting was to set priorities for twenty twenty-five. So it was pretty much a visioning session and a lot of good things came out of it, but I haven't seen any sort of documentation of where it stands right now. Does that seem accurate?
Yeah, just for, um, so all that stuff was kind of fed into the hopper and now staff is kind of researching priorities that were either came out of that or from council, uh, that we'll discuss further and maybe built into the budget, but in a few months, so.
Thank you.
Uh, we did have a February meeting, um, scheduled, but it was rescheduled, so no updates.
Perfect. Uh, from HAPC, um, we do have a meeting tomorrow. Um, we have one new business item, which is approval of a, a, how do I put this, an ex post facto. So it's a approval of something that's already been done, um, which unfortunately, you've heard me over the years talk about that being a, um, kind of a tradition in Oxford. So, um, um, I'm gonna work with staff, uh, kind of from the HAPC slash planning lens to, uh, see if we can clarify some legislation for some of our professional architects, developers and folks. Um, a lot of the offenses, so to speak, are not, you know, sweet ignorant homeowner who, you know, is an accountant and gee golly wouldn't know that. These are people who make millions of dollars as real estate and construction developers. And, uh, you know, in the architectural lens, uh, many of them have master's degrees and license. So it's a, you know, kind of like a police officer not knowing how to drive a car, just doesn't really make sense. So I'm gonna work with staff because it's, uh, it's been out of hand. Um, and again, the whole gee golly, ho hum, diddly dum, uh, it's gotta stop. So, uh, but then also, um, we, um. Actually, I won't, I won't jump, a lot of the stuff that we have in discussion items, uh, staff will cover. Um, I didn't, uh, I asked, uh, both Mr. Bracken and Vice Chair Rosenberg, uh, who weren't able to make it and neither had anything earth shattering they wanted to share. So with that, Mr. Perry?
If I could share on, um, updates, since Vice Chair Rosenberg is not here, I thought I might mention just some things that are happening in housing, um, that have come through this commission in the past. Uh, folks may have noticed the, uh, changes on Chestnut Street, uh, in the six hundred block of West Chestnut Street. Uh, there's been a couple of buildings removed and there'll be a third one removed for the Habitat for Humanity thirty-two townhome development. Uh, that was a partnership project, uh, between the, the city and Habitat for Humanity as a result of the city acquiring land and then seeking requests for proposals and applicants applied and then Habitat was selected to be the developer of the property. And so we're starting to see that happening now. There's not been an official groundbreaking or anything yet. Uh, I'm not sure if or when there will be one, but some dirt has obviously already been turned because a couple of buildings have been, uh, uh, removed. Um, on the other side of town, off of College Corner Pike, Hester Road, uh, you may recall discussion of a cottage community many years ago. Uh, a plan was approved, um, ultimately not implemented, um, due to some changes in the, uh, term agreement between the city and the developer that weren't able to be met. Uh, and so, um, a new RFP has gone out for that two acre property as well, for a new attempt at a, at some type of cottage community. Uh, so since there was no representation from Housing Advisory Commission, I wanted to mention those two. Uh, there's a committee reviewing those, um, uh, proposals and, uh, will be making a recommendation to council at some point for a developer for that property in the attainable or affordable housing sector, so, uh, which will probably come back to this commission at some point to review the details of the plan.
Are you able to share the appro, I know it's public record, but are, are, as part of that process after the award is made, is there a part of sharing what was approved, so at least the commission has a starting point for?
So it, it will get to City Council, um, for a recommendation for the partnership. Uh, and then they'll turn around and apply for the, the design process. But if there's a, if there's a time gap between, um, when City Council reviews it and when, uh, it's reviewed by the Planning Commission, we'll go ahead and let Planning Commission know who has sort of won the bid, so that you have an idea of what's coming in the future.
Okay.
Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I just, I know there were some, some, especially with the property and I just remember Mr. Bracken and we were talking about tree shielding and parking and things, so I just thought if, not that they have to adopt what was already approved, but, you know, if they, you know, in the spirit of HAPC where we sit down and kind of chat before they go through a formal process, I, if that's a possibility.
Oh, like a concept review type of?
Yeah, just so they understand where we landed last time. And again, it's, it's their, their proposal to make, but, you know, maybe, maybe if staff were able to tell them some of the concerns or, you know, at least.
It's a good thought. And, and Zach and Moore, City Planner here right next to me, does a really good job of, um, kind of educating applicants. Uh, it doesn't mean that everything is, is considered, um, but we can suggest a concept review and, you know, see if it fits their timeline, whoever the winning bidder is, so.
Not to interrupt, I just wanted proper clarification that the, the Habitat, PUD and subdivision was approved through both readings of council. So just sometimes on, on Planning Commission, we don't know what happens to those things, but that's moving forward. The condition about the sidewalk between the two buildings just proved to be kind of a deal breaker for them and so that was removed. So I just wanted to, I forgot to update on that.
Sure, yeah, very true, that's a recent action. Thank you, that's all I have.
There will be a dirt path because people will walk there. Mr. Moore, do you have anything?
Uh, the only thing I have for the commission tonight is actually an agenda item, it's the update on Oxford Today. So if you'd like to glide right on into.
Okay.
Point number six, I'm more than happy to pick that one up.
That works for me.
Commission's ready to discuss that.
Perfect.
Okay, um, and if you don't mind, I'm just gonna stay seated here, that way I can see the audience and see the commission at the same times, please.
You're, you're just doing impeccably well from there.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so, um, first of all, I do want to thank Chairman Watt and Dr. Berthrich for your contributions on February twenty-sixth, um, for attending the workshop event, uh, as well as your, uh, time, Dr. Berthrich, meeting with the consultants, really do appreciate your input on everything. And for the benefit of the, I wish it was a full commission tonight, but for the benefit of the five of you that are here, uh, do want to bring you guys up to speed on the status of the Oxford Today project. Oxford Today, build, preserve, imagine. So this is a comprehensive update of where we stand thus far on the project. So hopefully this is nothing new. Uh, the key project tasks behind the Oxford Today effort, there's really three different tasks in mind here. There's the Unified Development Code or UDC, so composing a unified code that would be considered unified because it will merge the subdivision regulations and the zoning code, zoning code together into one regulatory document, one set of regulations. The second point is to develop the first ever historic preservation plan for the mile square area of Oxford. We certainly have some historic districts already locally designated, but there are still a variety of historic landmarks and properties outside of those historic districts that as of today are unprotected. So there's a lot of potential there to, um, expand designations, potentially expanding some of our existing historic districts or designating single landmark properties throughout the mile square area, as well as even beyond the mile square. And I think that's gonna be taken up potentially by HAPC tomorrow night, um, to dive into deeper details on that. And then finally, point number three is to create new architectural design guidelines that would be tied to our local historic districts. And the main ones for that would be the Uptown Historic District and the University Historic District because those largely entail property that is off campus, that's in private hands. We do have a third historic district, the Western College Historic District, but that is pretty much entirely one hundred percent Miami owned property. Um, so the architectural design guidelines would be more particular to properties that we have a greater say over in terms of the architectural design outcomes. So those are the three main project tasks for Oxford Today. So why are we doing this? Well, once adopted by council, the UDC, the historic plan and the historic guidelines will help to fulfill several key objectives as stated in our Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan. Our comprehensive plan was adopted by council in January twenty twenty-three and I just thought I would highlight some of the objectives that are key to the Oxford Today process. So this isn't completely exhaustive, but, um, just to kind of highlight some of the key, uh, goals and objectives that are attributed to why we're now engaging with this Oxford Today effort. Starting with objective L one, this is out of our Land Use and Development Chapter, ensuring future development and redevelopment that contributes to an aesthetic character and quality that is uniquely Oxford. We want quality development in the city moving forward. And there's three actions that fall underneath that. Number one, action number one, favoring traditional urban neighborhood qualities over conventional auto oriented designs. So in terms of the design fabric, we would like it to be reminiscent of the walkable city, which is, uh, of course, here in Oxford, we, we talk about the mile square as the most walkable part of town. It's gridiron, lots of front porches, et cetera. So those are the kinds of neighborhood qualities that we want to see moving forward. Action two, exploring increasing allowable building height in one or more targeted locations, kind of put a pin in that, um, for the time being. Action A three, modernizing the Oxford zoning code, I think this is probably, this really hits the nail on the head. Modernizing the zoning code to include a hybrid of use based and form based approaches to standards. I'll get into a little bit what that means a little bit later on in the presentation. Um, but that's exactly what we are intending to do with our UDC. Then objective L two out of the comp plan, preserving and enhancing the character of the built and natural environment. So we have action A four, creating a mile square master plan. I think in a lot of ways, the historic preservation plan, in particular to the mile square, is fulfilling the spirit of that action. Um, then we have action A five to inventory and recognize historic and contributing structures throughout the city. So that is definitely gonna get baked in to the historic plan and that effort is underway. Uh, we have objective L three to promote development and redevelopment in targeted areas. So now we're starting to get into possibly sections of the city outside of the historic mile square. So favoring infill development over physical expansion of districts as much as possible, so kind of curbing urban sprawl as much as we can, keeping development concentrated. Then we have action A five, designating a pink zone in a targeted location to encourage local entrepreneurship. Um, and it's important to mention that this Oxford Today effort and the adoption or creation of this UDC is being funded by American Rescue Plan dollars specifically with economic development in mind. So we definitely want to keep this kind of a pink zoning approach in mind. And just for those of you who may not be aware of what a pink zone is, it's an area where there is a lessening or lightening of regulatory red tape in a very deliberate fashion so as to encourage improvement and redevelopment of areas that, um, as of today could, could use, could use some help, right? Use some development help. Then we move into the mobility chapter, objective M three for fostering an environment and a culture of active transportation. Action A six recommends to reduce off-street parking minimums in certain areas of town. And in fact, the commission has already done that, not just even a reduction, but a complete elimination, I might add, for alley development. So congratulations, we're already chipping away at that one. Thank you, commission. Uh, but certainly that will, um, be a part of our conversation moving forward, uh, in terms of how we structure the UDC and what the specific off-street parking minimums will be by land use. Then we have an objective in the housing chapter to expand housing options for all life stages. Housing for all, that's been a goal for a very long time. So action A one is to update zoning regulations to increase density and promote a diversity of residential housing types and living arrangements. Uh, what is sometimes referred to, well, I should say often referred to, as missing middle housing types. So those falling between your traditional single family home and a multifamily apartment complex. Cities are often lacking duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes and courtyard apartments, small apartment buildings, that type of thing. Then we have action A two, updating zoning regulations to expand allowance for accessory dwelling units. So accessory units would be a second unit that falls on the same property as the primary unit. Um, usually smaller and more incidental to the primary unit, so these could be apartments over detached garages. They could be, they're sometimes referred to as granny flats or mother-in-law suites. So, um, certainly something to keep in mind as we continue to craft the new UDC. And then back to the economics, um, economic development. So out of, um, the economic chapter, uh, we have an objective here for attracting new businesses and employment opportunities to diversify the local economy. And underneath this is action A three to develop an economic development strategic plan for Oxford. And I'm happy to announce, if you're not already aware, um, this is underway. So the city has retained Red Tiger Investments LLC under care of Sean Bones to, uh, develop this, this very thing, an economic development strategic plan. Um, and our consultants on this project have been conversing with Sean to make sure that our efforts are in alignment, that each effort is informing one another. Um, and then in our sustainability chapter, we have objective S two, to build resilience for a changing climate. And then underneath this is action A two that mentions both building and zoning codes. Um, as a city, we can adopt amendments, local amendments to the building code, even though the building code is, uh, effectively managed, administered at the state level. In terms of zoning codes, it's pretty much every community that gets to define their own zoning scheme. So with this action, it is, uh, recommending to adopt climate responsive and resilient building and zoning codes, so something we'll definitely keep in mind as well. And this is the consultant team, um, you will meet them eventually in person. We have four main individuals, so McKenna, which is handling the bulk of the UDC component of the project, is, uh, being led by Abby Emerson, AI CP, as well as Adam Cook. And then on the historic preservation front, we have Preservation Forward and Jessica Flores and Becca Murphy are leading that charge. And they were all present, of course, for the February twenty-sixth workshop event. So, um, the remainder of the slides that I have for you are mainly focusing in on the UDO aspect. So just to kind of put it into perspective for you, what we're tasked with, with this UDO is to consider various factors, various sources of information. And I like to kind of use this analogy of putting them through a machine and output, you know, out, uh, out comes the UDO from consideration of all of these elements. So existing land uses, keeping the existing character and form of the city in mind, looking to our current zoning districts, what do we currently allow and where do we allow it? Future land use map, what does our comprehensive plan recommend in terms of future growth, future patterns of growth? Plan developments, we definitely want to observe any vested rights that have been, um, already enacted through previous plan development or PUD style approvals. We do have a handful of those in town that we definitely need to consider and respect to make sure we're not taking any rights away that could get the city into some kind of a legal jeopardy type of situation. Um, and then of course, as I've mentioned already, the historic assets and resources, keeping those in mind, keeping in mind our existing historic districts and what might become of those in terms of expansions or new landmark designations. We do have neighborhood overlays to consider as well, the neighborhood conservation overlays. Um, it's kind of, the, the inception of it was to define sort of a grassroots type of process where the residents can get together and petition the city to, uh, apply a neighborhood designation that would try to deter rentals forming or, or proliferating within their, within their neighborhood. It doesn't outright prohibit rentals, but it does reduce potential occupancies for new rentals. Um, so what we're thinking with that and just observing the various case law, cases that have been heard, uh, here in Ohio and otherwise, uh, what we're thinking is with the future zoning. with the future zoning map, that we would just take those overlays off the map and just kind of bake in some of the substance of the overlays into the definitions of what we mean by, say, single-family dwelling, or the definition of family, which is the very last line item on there. And it gets pretty complicated pretty quick, so I won't go into any more detail on that. But just know that we are considering that very carefully.
What kind of machine is that?
I'm not sure. It's a zoning machine.
Kind of looks like cotton candy, but okay.
Okay. Yeah, we could call it the cotton candy machine of zoning.
It's a sausage machine.
Yes.
But we don't care how it's made. We just...
Yep, there's a graph on there, there's a couple of switches, and yep. Anyways. Okay, so I figured I would share with you a series of maps. So starting with our current zoning districts. So this is our official palette of zoning districts and where they apply throughout the city. And I won't go through each and every one of these. But generally speaking, anywhere that's yellow is residentially zoned. Anywhere that's a shade of red is either commercial or mixed use, which would be commercial and residential together. The blue area, that is the MU University District. So that is kind of like a holding zone for university property and university-related uses. And then anything that is green or greenish is... So there's an agricultural, AOS, Agricultural Open Space District on the south end of town. And then there's also some zones that carry over from Oxford Township that were annexations by the city where the city never actually went in and applied city zoning classifications to those properties. So some examples, there was an annexation of the airport. I think that was in like, maybe 2021 or so, if I'm not mistaken. That still retains the township zoning, which I think is the A1 zoning. So this UDO represents an opportunity where we can bring all property within the corporate limits of the city into a city zoning classification. So your zoning administrator doesn't have to awkwardly refer to the county rural zoning resolution and trying to interpret what's allowed on properties that have retained the township zones. And then here is our future land use map. So you can kind of see there is some alignment, and perhaps some areas that don't quite align. And that's okay, because the comprehensive plan is a guide for amending the zoning. So what the future land use map holds are, it's a palette of future land use development categories, ranging from the least intense, that would be rural, the light green. So everything that surrounds the city is pretty much assigned to that category for Oxford Township regions of the map. Then you get into preserves and green space, then suburban neighborhood, transitional suburban neighborhood, and then you become increasingly more urban as you work your way up to the urban core character designation, which of course applies to our Uptown Business District, our premier business district here in Oxford. And then we have quite a few areas that are designated as mixed-use center. And the idea behind that is to help to redevelop those areas from an auto-centric, purely commercial nature into one that can support a mix of uses and possibly a more urbanization of those areas, making them more pedestrian-friendly, more transit-friendly, bicycle-friendly, et cetera. And then we have some categories reserved for perhaps the more suburban regions of town that could still have good pedestrian connectivity, but perhaps will still retain some of that automobile-orientedness around them. So the employment corridor along College Corner Pike, then there's Employment Center down where the Kettering Medical Center is, University Park Boulevard in 27, as well as Oxford Milford Road in 73. And then we have a flex industrial category for the region of town that is up by Schneider Electric and IMI Concrete. And then what will, we hope, will eventually become the Tractor Supply Company Store that, of course, went through Planning Commission. And then finally, we have a campus designation. And the campus designation applies, of course, to the university campus, but it also applies to other campus-like settings like Talawanda High School, Talawanda Middle School, the Chestnut Fields area, which is owned by Miami University, as well as Kramer Elementary. So that designation is not just exclusive to university property.
I have a quick question on that. So obviously Oxford's small, and we don't have a ton of private schools. I can only think of, you know, outside of daycares, I can only think of the Montessori. Is that because, because it's a private entity and it's not location-bound, where obviously like, Talawanda owns the property that, you know, the high school, for say, for example, is on. Would those be captured in campus? Is it like all education, or is it more like core, large-scale?
This is more character-specific. So like, for instance, you've got Montessori, which is just to the west of Kramer.
Yeah.
But that ended up getting lumped into the suburban neighborhood setting. And you could argue that it's part of the fabric of the Westgate Drive area.
Yeah, because it's on a residential street.
It's on a residential street, exactly. And you do have like, possibility for smaller daycares. Like, there's one off of Chestnut and is it Clover Circle?
Chestnut and Clover.
Chestnut and Clover. And that is certainly part of a neighborhood setting, so that kind of gets lumped into that category. Good question.
So it's more the overarching theme versus spot zoning?
Yeah, if I had a, there would be another map that I could have shown you, and that would have been existing land use. And if it was showing the existing land use, then it definitely, like, for Montessori, that would definitely be a school, because they own that property.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, here it is. This is what we are thinking for our new zoning districts. And I'll leave this up here for a while for you guys to kind of soak this in. This, of course, was presented on the 26th split. Three of you were not there, so definitely want to give you an opportunity to kind of soak this in. And this is not set in stone, right? This is just what we are proposing at this moment, based on everything that got fed into that machine, right? That we have access to, all the facts, the data, the information, knowing what our existing land use makeup is, knowing where our current zoning districts apply, knowing what the future land use map holds in store as a recommendation. This is kind of the output as of this moment in terms of where we see the zoning district categories, where we see those stacking up. So just to go through those here. Starting, of course, with Uptown. I don't think there would be much argument there that Uptown should reside in its own category. You may also notice that Uptown, in terms of this purply color, kind of extends a little further to the west and to the south, almost kind of shakes hands with the South Locust Street area. So that would be a considerable policy change from our existing zoning map. And I'll show you a little bit more. I have another map that zooms into this in greater detail. So I'll show you what that's about here in a second. But just considering the citywide view for this moment. So you've got, from Uptown, you kind of blend out into the more residentially-dominated urban neighborhoods of the Mile Square. So everywhere that's orange to the north and to the northeast and to the south, that would be its own category. So not too much unlike what we have now with R1 MS, R2 MS, R3 MS. Those are our existing zoning classifications. So forming that as its own category, distinct category of use and pattern of development. Then from there, we have suburban business. So suburban business would be split among those areas that are more commercially dominated versus those that have a little bit more of an industrial mix. So the more intense suburban business would be reserved for the likes of, you know, the northwest corner of town, Ringwood Road, College Corner Pike. That would be kind of that flex industrial type of zoning.
So coming back up for a second and go back to the Uptown changes?
Sure. Why don't I go ahead and skip to this slide? So you can see that a little bit better.
But what would the implications be for the surrounding area that that would be extended to?
Sure, sure, that's a great question. So I think what I will do, so this is the district categories. So I'm going to skip ahead. And this is just a way to try to simplify the number of colors, the number of categories on the legend. But within these categories, there would be a gradation or variation between different subareas of each of those district categories. So within the Uptown, that would be split among the Uptown Core, which would more or less follow the existing boundary of the UP, Uptown Zoning District. And then surrounding it would be a transition zone, the Uptown Transition. And that would be the region that would kind of drift over toward the southwest and kind of shake hands, as I said, with the mixed-use center, or urban mixed-use zoning classification that would comprise Stewart Square, all the way down to Kroger, up north to La Rosa's, that would be the urban mixed-use.
So is most of the housing, it's apartments? That's over by Oxford West?
Right, yeah, so Miami Preserve sits right here. So Miami Preserve would fall in the urban mixed-use, and then Oxford West along Ogden Court, right here, that would be urban neighborhood two. So a little lighter in intensity compared to urban mixed-use. The urban mixed-use would be more, like, higher-density residential. Could be possible there. Sure, yeah. Talk about Elm.
Before you talk about Elm Street, one thing that, it started a couple of years ago on HAPC, and it's popped up, is there was a particular property where, you know, in Uptown and how it's owned, they can build 48 feet. But across the street, there are traditional houses that are about 28 feet. So the idea of kind of a transition has been a longstanding thing, as we do historical, because we don't want, regardless of the design, we don't want a 48-foot building. And hey, here's an old California bungalow. So that's, there was, there was, for, at least on HAPC, and as we've talked about, the historic context is a fabric and fiber. So the transition of not having a wall across the street from you. So that's kind of the spirit of where I think that aligns with a lot of the comprehensive plan is, you know, just kind of more of a flow and a focus to Uptown. And then, I mean, funny enough, it's at the top of a hill, letting it kind of fade down the hill. So again, nothing official. It's just, for years, we've kind of had that in our mind on the historic design side.
Well, and this is right now just the map that's showing where the districts would be applied, but the content of those districts, for example, a 48-foot limit is currently in the Uptown, but you're not imagining...
We're not imagining that.
We haven't seen, okay.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so that's, I mean, I just have to reserve judgment on...
HAPC does a lot of work in Uptown, sorry.
We have to reserve judgment on the map, because we don't, like, there's all the code that's behind it. And so that's the second part of the equation, so, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and I think with the, like, the RO zoning district, that, let me go back to current zoning. And I know it's hard to see, because it's a citywide scale, but...
Can you zoom it in, by chance?
Actually, I might be able to. Let me back out, and then...
Yeah, even if it's not pretty, functional fashion.
So everywhere that is pink around Uptown is currently zoned residential office, RO. And it's a 35-foot height limit in that district. And it's predominantly a residential district, but it does allow for office uses, so...
And predominantly, the offices are in old residential.
Yes, and they can be, certainly. Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So what we're envisioning is just kind of extending that style of a district that may, and it may be a little bit more developed than the current RO, but with the Uptown Transition. So we would kind of match that flavor along South Elm Street. And you already have a taste of that, right there, with the Whistlestop, the Shademakers, thank you. Former Whistlestop, Shademakers. And you have the Junction House that's there, which is commercially utilized. And also zoned, it looks like it's zoned general business, too, so...
And College at Elm and the Fire Station.
College at Elm, which is right here. And those houses that you mentioned earlier are zoned general business. They're not even zoned residential. So what this would do is recognize residential as a permitted use for those houses, but also allow for other, more commercially inclined uses to be introduced into that setting.
And also, just a fun history lesson. I think Dr. Britheridge and I were the only two on the commission at the time, but there was a proposal before, when it was Whistlestop, before Shademakers went in, to actually zone that R3, which would have basically been your, the one behind Dunkin' Donuts you just mentioned, the big apartment complex.
Miami Preserve?
Miami Preserve. It would have been the same. And later, it came in front of the commission and got re-zoned general business. So funny enough, it hypothetically would end up with that middle-ground density, intensity versus just huge on the edge of town.
Well, I think the idea of dividing up the commercial districts goes back many, many years.
Yeah.
I know Dr. Britheridge has talked about this for a long time. And so having something that's more granular than general business will really be powerful for the city in the future.
So this is just a procedural question. You know, the agenda item is kind of an update, but obviously, we could really sink our teeth and go into a lot of depth around this stuff. So I'm just trying to understand how you, like, because I have ideas, so I might draw the boundaries differently. How should we go about this conversation? Is like, tonight the opportunity? Or is this kind of, this is an update? Because this seems like work session material, where we can really crack it open. So I guess just understanding the scope of the conversation tonight, how much you want us to get into it? How much this is kind of like, this is where we are today, and we'll follow up with the work session, so...
Yeah, this is definitely an update, because one of the things that I think staff has done a great job on is, before anybody can and should sink their teeth in, we need to have something to sink our teeth into. So, you know, as this evolves, I think there's some more iterations that we're working on. I know there's a couple, at least on the historic side, there's a couple of things that Preservation Forward, like, it has as deliverables. So I think, I think we'll, we've talked about having a work session once we have things to dive into and get to the granular stage. Because one of the things that just pop, like, comes to mind real quick is depending what direction we go and kind of the spirit and theme, that will impact potentially heights and things of that nature. So really, this is intended to be an update so that we can kind of frame things. And then as we get a recommendation, you know, have a concept to dig our teeth into and say, okay, well, that makes sense, and we're setting heights and doing...
So I'm just trying to understand, though, because they're kind of coming back to us in August with recommendations? Is that kind of, that's the, like, draft final? So just trying to understand where we and our sinking our teeth into this stuff fits into that process.
Well, that's what I said, we're going to have a work session.
It won't be involved the consultant. So if you want to have a work session?
Yeah.
We could totally do that. It's at your pleasure. You're the designee for the planning commission, Mr. Watt. So if you want to have a work session, you let us know. But it won't involve the consultant, because we have our time for, you know, we have a contract scope.
We only have so many meetings where they can...
Buildable hours!
But I guess, so we currently have the draft map. Do we have a sense of what the district language is behind the map yet?
Not quite yet. We were...
I think that seems like a stage, and it seems to me like that could be a couple of different work sessions. Because I think, I mean, it's hard to look at the map without knowing what the code is behind the map. And so if we have a sense of what the draft language is, and those things like building, that's what mattered to us.
Just about to ask if you had that.
So, but I mean, I think the idea, like, as we know in Oxford, that building height, like, that number, that single integer is super important to whether people want to tear buildings down and redevelop them. So to me, like, I want to know some of those things. So I guess I would just say that I'm wondering whether, if the consultant would be working on this, and we have some draft stuff, I think it'd be really great for the planning commission to review that, to feed that back to the consultant. So what comes back in August has had some input from this board.
That is the intent, but less than two weeks ago, That is the intent, but less than two weeks ago, they were here in town, literally having us put stickers on preferences. So I, there's some synthesizing of that information. Also realizing that, you know, I have the luxury of being on both commissions, so there's quite a hefty percentage that is actually on historic and zoning and guidelines. So, it's not that, you know, I mean, they're trying to weave two things together with two commissions. So again, you know, I haven't even seen, I mean, the last I saw was talking with the folks from McKenna, you know, putting my stickers on and getting my bingo card. So I know that they, that's what I was saying, they still have some deliverables on both ends to get to the city staff.
Maybe I could suggest that if we have an upcoming month where there's not any cases, you know, if Zach is done doing the staff review of the language that's been drafted by the consultant, we might be at a point where we can do a work session on that in place of a regular meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can take that feedback and give it to the consultant, how does that sound?
Yeah, that sounds perfect.
I think that would help keep us on track. I mean, I guess I would also say, while I like us to be responsive and sometimes our schedule's driven by the applicant, like, they kind of like, it's an emergency situation, this is a long-term investment in getting this right. And so, for those of us who like, who would be in the stage of actually implement, I mean, you're the first, you're the co-zoning administrator, but we would be working with it too. So I think that having the buy-in to the code, yeah, like, I, we have a draft map, I'm really anxious to sit down with it in detail with some, with some draft ideas of what the code language might be. And so if that's a work session in front of a regular session that has a work, like, I just view that would be worthwhile use of time.
I just think it's important that the timing of our input is aligned in some way with the deliverables that they have, so maybe you guys could think about that. It looks like August is the draft, I can't really see it.
Yes, so the draft will come in chunks. So, there's the first chunk, chapters one through four, that we're working through right now. So we haven't even gotten into the meat when it comes to like the districts.
Okay.
I think that is going to be within five through eight, which won't come until next month.
Okay.
So, and it looks like we've, we've got some working group meetings kind of interspersed throughout the schedule, but that would be with the planning designee, Mr. Watt. So, if we want to have, you know, work sessions at strategic moments within the schedule.
So, I mean, if anyone's really, really bored, they can go listen to the minutes. We had talked about that at the beginning of this process, because we didn't specifically lay them out, because we didn't know the timeline, so it was somewhat arbitrary to just say, we're gonna meet June 12th. We didn't know what we would have. So, I just want to reiterate that this is a six-figure contract with staff, so this is very well laid out, this is very well thought out. Also, for the ideation, I do have to tap into Assistant City Manager Green and reiterate that the comprehensive plan is what is driving the ideation. Of course, there will be, and there should be work sessions on, you know, heights and, you know, okay, because, you know, if it's a gable roof, that's different than a flat roof. And like, yes, there will be nano, but a lot of this conceptual ideation is coming from and is driven by the comprehensive plan, so.
But the comprehensive plan, I agree, but the comprehensive plan is very high-level and some of these questions become matters of integers, like how far a setback is and what a building height is, and that's pretty nitty-gritty stuff. So I just, when I'm looking at that schedule, which still envisions, you know, a draft deliverables in August and potentially going into council readings in the fall, I don't know if that's still the intention. Then, for our input to be at all formative, like it needs to happen this spring, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think like, the sooner the better, you know, basically.
Well, we're not gonna bring anything to you unless we've looked at it first.
No, we understand that, but-
No, I understand.
That's gonna be, we want to make sure that you're, what you're looking at is something that we've already filtered. And I think that a subcommittee is another tool, too. You know, if it's difficult to kind of get all seven, you know, before, right, if we have a lot of cases, you know, a subcommittee could be something that could then at least provide some feedback for staff, you know, to then give back to the consultant. So if it turns out that we have a whole bunch of, you know, applications for different cases, which we haven't, but if we do, then that would allow us to, as Dr. Pritherich just said, kind of make sure that nothing is delayed and we are still getting, as Ms. Webster said, you know, feedback at strategic times.
Can you just clarify in regard to adoption of whatever it is they do? What is the process? Do we, do we have a, are we part of that step or?
Yes, just like any zoning code amendment, like you've got on the agenda tonight, you would make a recommendation to city council. And the city council would have two readings and then thirty days effective after that, so. There would be also another, is it two more, community open houses or one more? I think it's-
I believe it's one more, it's this one right here?
Yeah, so we're, we've penciled the end of May, I think it's like May 29th for the next community meeting.
Sounds far right.
So, maybe we would have had a work session prior to that already. You know, if we've looked at all three sections, you know, all three kind of drafts of code, we may have already had a subcommittee meeting or a work session. So going into that community meeting in late May, then at that point, it's like, the consultant team, staff, planning commission has all kind of reviewed everything and now we're waiting for, you know, the public to give their input on it, so.
And also, just making sure carts and horses aren't in inappropriate order. To talk about things like setbacks, we need to know the density and potential purpose of the area. And that's where we're at now. Once we have some solidified deliverables, staff has had a chance to look at it, bring it in front of us, you know, review, talk, whatever the case may be, then we can dive into things. Because some of the things, and these have come out even at the public meetings where you've been, Dr. Pritherich, you know, new concepts, and I'm spitballing, I think it was, okay, allowing reduced height in alley development for, you know, alteration of setbacks. So like, again, these are all still things, like, I feel like we're trying to eat the cake and the oven's still on. So, like, I just really want to meter our expectations, that we have to let it cook, take it out, let it cool down, and then try it, you know? I mean, we have a general recipe.
But I also see a final deliverable in August, an adoption in September. So I'm just saying that, like, I would like to be, I think, I would love for the planning commission to be part of the cooking and not just the presentation of the cake, to use your metaphor. And so from that point of view, as an investment of time goes, I love to argue about the details of a single proposal, but this code is one of the most important investments of, we're gonna have to live with this. And I believe that this commission's engagement can, you know, not to substitute for staff, but can offer good insight, so I just-
I think they're like a baking show, the ingredient is chocolate and they're gonna help us bake.
Yeah, so I guess I would, I hope that we can pencil-
Well, because we're paying the consultant to do the legwork and then we are involved. So I think, I think the paradigm shift is what people are having trouble with is, is we are an approval board, obviously, we get into details and we dig, but, you know, the Walmart board isn't out stocking shelves and doing things.
And this is a philosophical difference, I think, between us. I mean, I view this board as integral to the writing of the code and not just its administration.
I understand.
And so I'm just saying that I would like for us to be involved in that stage. So, and I personally would be very much happy to be, spend work session time if we have to have special, every two meets, like, I just want to make sure that I can feel a hundred percent confident in all the details of this, just for the sake of the ownership of the code when we have to administer it, so we don't end up waiving things or, you know, like, I think that this board being invested in the code is just essential to its success, that's just awesome with that.
I understand, but it is a philosophical difference, because we are a regulatory board and there's a difference between advocacy board, so like, a nonprofit board is advocacy board. We are regulatory and in this situation, we have multiple staff that we pay, probably not great money, that make more than private sector, but we have dedicated staff who are extremely knowledgeable and staff are our daily, are our daily executors. So, you know, Mayor Snaveley, lovely gentleman. Mr. Elliott runs the city on a daily basis. So I just, I want to make sure we're reiterating that, like, yes, we will have input, but we are not, we are not the consultants.
They're not the consultants, but according to your revised code, we have our own charter, but according to the revised code, the planning commission shall make plans and maps. That's an active verb, you know?
Yes.
We are not administering the plans and maps, we make the plans and maps. And so, I'm so happy to have such amazing stuff. So this is not at all reflection, you know, I have a hundred percent trust in you. I think we have great consultants. I just don't want to abdicate the role that the creation plan commissions is not just an advisory. We make the plans and the maps according to the revised code.
I never said we were advisory, I'm saying, we hired somebody to cook us dinner. We need to at least let them cook the meal.
Hundred percent.
So, I agree with both you guys. I just think that really the biggest issue is this is a tremendous amount of information to absorb. So, I don't think it's gonna work well for us to just be given on, you know, July 31, a stack of papers. Like, we kind of have to, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but somehow we need to be fed this material in a way that we can process it in a, you know, a helpful way. So that's where I'm coming from.
And I agree absolutely with you, and that's what this is. This is, this is your appetizer. Here's something to wrap your head around, we're gonna dig in further and further. So, but again, I think, I think there are opportunities, you know, we will schedule work sessions, but again, I'm not gonna pick an arbitrary date or something and then-
And there's no rush.
There's not that many months left between now and the end.
Well, to counter some of the concerns, if I may, there's not a rush, there's, the consultant's already told us, I've already asked them, you know, if we run into things that require more time, how's that gonna affect our, you know, our agreement? They said, you know what, we'll just back away. When you're ready for us, then we'll come back to the table. And so, if we get into some of these work sessions and there's things that just take more time to sink our teeth into as a commission, then we'll just tell the consultant, we will call you when we need you again. So the schedule may, you know, change if it needs to, and we're fine with that.
Yeah.
Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get in the way of schedule, I just, I hope that we are built into the schedule, is basically what I'm hoping for.
Yes, and just because we threw out a lot of illustrations, I'm not saying we're just here to rubber stamp, but what I'm saying is, how we designed this process from HAPC, the city, the consultants and this commission was, they would produce a product based and guided on what we, comprehensive plan, what we talked about. And then from there, we can say, hey, this is thirty-five feet, make it, you know, like, the way I see it is, we have to have something to adjust. We're not the ones who should be creating it from the ground up. We've given them kind of, you know, I hate to say marching orders, but like, hey, here's what we want, deliver a product, and then comes the editing. So again, from a, you know, there's a difference between being the sports writer and being the sports editor. And I think we are actually more of the editor, but like, that's where we have our input.
I mean, you know, Sam points out that we have no direct relationship to these consultants. Every, you know, they have their own meetings scheduled, right? And any input that we have sort of filters through you guys, right?
Well, you're welcome to come, the invitation goes out to everybody for the public sessions, correct?
But, the planning commissioners receive no more invitation than the general public did.
Yeah, so it's-
If you followed, I mean, if you were, if you pay attention, people would have known. And maybe that was purposeful in terms of, there are the sunshine law, things we have to watch out for, but the, yeah, I think the planning commission happens to be a body that has, of all stakeholders, we kind of have a stakeholder too, we're stakeholders too, so.
I, you know, where I just say, let's put, let's our little group get together and set some dates where we can, you know, download whatever's available, just so we're, you know, moving along and we're not blindsided at the end by information that we didn't know about. And this is excellent, like, I get it, that this is part of our education, so grateful for that. But I just think we're nerdy kind of people and we really would like to see some of these documents, you know, for more than a few minutes, so, that's all.
Not a problem, thank you.
Do you have any more presentation, Mr. Watt?
I think the only other item I was gonna mention, I think I covered the gist of some of the districts that we, the consultants and us have in mind as of the present time. This was, these slides here, we're talking about taking a form-based approach to standards, which is a recommendation of our comp plan. So, what was presented at the February 26 workshop, there were these various cards that you could stick on the boards with Velcro to define out the various zoning districts in terms of what sort of building types would be allowable. So, everything from, you know, a standard house to a cottage court to a fourplex, to a duplex, to a liner hiding a parking lot behind, a general-purpose building, a makerspace, a movie theater. So these are various building types. And with a form-based approach, you can think almost, I like to use this analogy, I guess, we're moving from cake to-
We have, we all love metaphors, don't we?
Yes, we do, yes, we do. We geek out over it. So if you think of the code as shaping the glass, right? So the building types are like the glasses. And then the land uses dwell within the building, so the use would be the beverage that resides within your glass, right? So that's probably, it's the best analogy I could come up with, I don't know if it's original or somebody else had this idea, but-
What's the drink? What's the drink?
It is whatever, yeah.
Well, we are around the corner from St. Pat's Day.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's, the possibilities are endless, just like whatever choices are-
Maybe we'll find out in the next public comment what the drink is.
I don't know what this green liquid might be.
Coincidental.
Yes.
Uh, I think it got caught on the, it was like it wanted me to comment or something, so. Next, help.
Yeah, I think it's trying to edit.
Right, I don't, I've never seen this shape before.
You can just scroll down.
Okay, well, I'll just scroll down then. And then this is just a taste of the suburban business districts. And I know this is a lot of information, as you said, and I think we could definitely make this publicly available. We'll put this on the project website, so if you'd like to return to this to kind of-
I thought it was on the project website.
They're meditating the presentation, the presentation.
Oh, okay.
This is the staff.
I was like, it was on the website.
I think their boards are also on the website too.
I was like, I thought they were.
So, moving down to, yeah, it was just the project schedule was the last bit and I think we already covered that pretty thoroughly, so I don't, I don't have anything more to say. That constitutes my update on the effort, so.
Well, thank you, I know that you've put, putting a lot of work into this. Sometimes where it's like, it looks like, when the consultants are presenting, what's your product sometimes? So, and that's, and that's like an ideal relationship, you know, like, I mean, you're the zoning administrator and so that, I mean, you are the key person, and so, yeah.
And it's been a two-way street too, it's not just me leading the charge on everything.
No, of course.
They feed in ideas, I feed them ideas and then we just kind of talk about it and-
And my impression is they get us, and that's why I do trust that they're gonna produce a really good product. But we do know the particularities of our economy and the intended and unintended consequences of everything. We have some experience and some scar tissue, and so I think you guys have that, we have that and we all have our different perspectives on that. And so, I think together, we're gonna end up with a really awesome code, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cool. All right, next item is old business, so I'll accept a motion to untable PC 2024-20, which is zoning text amendment to increase allowable floor space, I'm sorry, floor area for retail services from ten to twenty thousand square foot in the Uptown zoning district.
I move that we take PC 2024-20 off of the table.
I have a motion to untable by Dr. Pritherich, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cruth with the second, all those in favor of untabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn to public hearing. Anyone?
Oh, I'm sorry, so moved.
Dr. Pritherich with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Cruth with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Hello, Mr. Perry.
Evening, I'm gonna stand up.
Perfect.
Sitting for a little while, so. So, we've had a couple of discussions about this and it sat for a little while. This was in response to some potential for maybe loosening up the regulations to allow a retail use more than ten thousand square feet without a requirement to go through the conditional use process in the Uptown zoning district. Of course, we were just talking about rewriting the zoning code, but this is making changes to it before we get around to the overall rewrite of the overall zoning code. Because we do have a couple of properties in town that have been sitting for a while. So those of you that have been in the community for a while have seen an old funeral home, a vacant bookstore, properties like that could potentially benefit from a code amendment like this. And so if you remember those previous discussions that we've had on this amendment, this was originally requested by economic development specialist Seth Kropenbaker, who's also working with a different consultant on the economic development strategic plan. And so we talk frequently about what are ways that we can incentivize the right kind of development in the right location and try to predict, as Dr. Pritherich was just stating on the previous discussion.
uh and try to predict, as Dr. Prithrich was just stating on the previous um discussion, uh what those unintended consequences might be, which is the exact reason why this went a little bit slower uh than what uh the original proposal was, um based on your feedback, which was to um keep uh that additional layer of protection in for bars and restaurants, but loosen it up for uh the retail uses. And so what Zach did was take that feedback and put it in the strikeout underlined form in the code, uh which is, we think, captures what you were looking for, uh which is to retain that ten thousand square foot uh threshold uh for bars and restaurants. Because um I think everyone could probably agree that uh there is an unpredictable nature to uh large-scale entertainment facilities. Uh there might be something that we hadn't thought of uh if it um, if it has a conditional use review opportunity. So if it's under that, it doesn't, it would not come uh before the commission or council. Uh but if it's over that, then it would. Um and so right now, the way the code is written, any uh type of non-residential use that's over that ten thousand square foot threshold would require the conditional use. Um this would basically um carve out anything but bars and restaurants to be exempt from that and go up to twenty thousand square feet, which is almost a quarter of a block. Um so that's a, that's a pretty good sized retail use. Um and we've got a couple properties like that. Um there have been, there has been a small amount of interest uh for um retailer uh to utilize more than ten thousand square feet at one of the properties that I was mentioning earlier. Uh and so we think this code amendment could potentially open that door. It doesn't mean it would happen. Uh but our vision would be that when buildings are designed and built, is that the ground floor would not be sitting vacant. Uh we'd like to activate those spaces for um the pedestrians and for the benefit of the overall community. And as you know, the mixed-use buildings that are being built in the Uptown District uh are primarily focused on uh the upper-level residences and unfortunately sometimes leaves those ground force play spaces unactivated sometimes for many years. Uh and so hopefully this code amendment would uh help uh minimize that possibility. And that's really all I have. It's attached in your packet um by uh the different code in the Uptown District.
I do have a question, but I'll try to go last cuz it's not earth-shattering.
That's all I have to share.
Does anybody have a question, Mr. Perry? First of all, Mr. Moore, stellar job. Um I I think this is very well adjusted. Uh one thing I didn't think of, otherwise I would have told you guys or asked earlier, cuz you know me. Marijuana uh marijuana dispensaries, does that fall under drug and pharmaceutical? Cuz it's not under conditional use. And I can't remember, cuz you and I, we only had an administrative approval that was uh like parking or something.
Yeah, so back in two thousand seventeen, city council decided not to uh amend regulations to have additional requirements for what was at the time medical marijuana, uh before the state had the state licensing program. And so planning commission just kind of tried to work within that guidance from city council. And then uh when um recreational became allowed, then city council uh only allowed the two locations that are licensed for medical, medical, and that was done by ordinance, not through planning commission. So essentially a land use regulation, but it was not done through zoning. And so um but there is potential in the future. I think based on the history, we'd probably go through city council first, but um I think you're right. It it would fall under that.
And and vape shops, I know at one point we had a moratorium on them, uh the number. Um and actually, I don't know if it was vape shops or those who sell tobacco products.
So it's all the above. And so, yeah, city council put a moratorium on that in twenty twenty-three while regulations are being drafted. Very similar kind of thing. Another land use regulation that was done through the business licensing uh regulation, chapter seven, so outside of zoning.
Okay.
Uh that moratorium ended and licensing was put in place based on um two different factors. Proximity from youth-oriented facilities and also um which is five hundred feet and then an overall uh limit based on the population. Uh no more than one for every one thousand five hundred residents, which is seventeen, and we currently have twenty-three. Uh but because the.
So there's gonna be some attrition before.
They're over time. There will be, yeah.
My my third part of my question, um i- is it something we could come back to? Like if we decide it, cuz I just, the way I see it is potentially like, the way it's written is we could have a, you know, twenty thousand square foot, you know, vape shop or, you know, if one of those loses their license or wants to switch a location.
The like, Uptown, it's not gonna happen because of the proximity to the parks and the other vape shops.
Okay.
So the risk is pretty low. Um if you still, for for whatever reason, this, that particular topic or another one feeling easy about it, we're probably gonna address this on the overall code update anyway.
Okay.
But the the risk that you bring up, which is actually a really good comment, um that Zach and I talk about quite a bit, kinda goes back to the property rights of in what we call investment-backed expectations. And so if you make a change to the zoning code and it goes into effect and then someone, you know, sells or buys a piece of property that is based on that new regulation, then if that regulation is then repealed or rolled back, we could be at risk for um taking a property right away. Uh and so that's something, definitely something to keep in mind. So I appreciate you bringing it up. Let, the the likelihood is pretty low. Um in this case, with tobacco retailers and and marijuana, because of the regulations that are already in place and the spacing parameters, the numbers, the licensing from the state. Um but uh thinking about the unintended things that could happen, we definitely appreciate that.
Got it. Cool. Any questions? All right. Uh at this time, I will entertain uh.
Do you wanna take any comments from the public?
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
I thought we did that during the public hearing, but.
Yeah, that's what I was doing.
Okay, I thought you were asking for us to close the public hearing. I misunderstood you.
Nope. More informative if I finish the sentence. Uh so if there's no questions for Mr. Perry, you are de facto for Mr. Kruppen, uh Kruppenbaker, so.
Correct.
Um at this point, if there's anybody in the uh crowd who would like to uh address the commission, you have up to three minutes. Uh we just ask that you come up, state your name, uh provide any comments. Uh as I love to say, it's a public comment, not public conversation. So we will not uh respond per se. Um but if any of you wanna speak to this issue, you're welcome to come up. Just trying to get through a class requirement. I get it. All right. For the record, nobody moved. They all smiled and giggled. Uh so with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
So moved.
Dr. Prithrich, I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cruith with the second. Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh seeing no opposition, we are out of public hearing. Um all right, so.
So I just wanna first acknowledge and thank also, these are your students here who are required to attend a public meeting. Being a planner or being a developer requires being out after dinnertime sometimes uh in a public meeting in some courthouse somewhere. So this is your first test of like whether this is actually something you wanna do or not. Um but anyway, I wanted to provide a little context. I I think Mr. Perry did a great job of this. This is kind of just super interesting because what we have is a desire of our economic development staff to make sure that Oxford is welcoming to the kind of retailers we'd love to have hypothetically, like a, like a mini Target, okay? We don't know the likelihood of that, but 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 there's, there's the thought among economic development staff that we wanna make, we just wanna remove a barrier. And and the barrier's not that high. You have to go through a conditional use process if you wanted to, and and a target probably would. But but they asked us to, hey, can you raise this limits? Cuz one of the tools in the code is the square footage requirement. And that's one of the things towns did. Why we have our code did this is typically to support smaller businesses, you know, that if you have a square footage limit, that it's likely going to privilege a smaller business that can operate at twelve, ten thousand foot. And anything bigger, we'd have a say over with the conditional use process. So we're getting rid of that. But but when we were proposed, we just said, well, let's get rid of it in general. And and to be honest, the only business we could imagine filling twenty thousand square feet uptown was a really big bar. Uh so that we still wanna maintain some control over through the conditional use process. It's not to say it couldn't be approved, but we would have a say over the the negative consequences of the, to mitigate them. So I think, you know, in that world of planning where we're trying to encourage one thing while not incurring, I I view this as relatively low risk. I'm not a hundred percent sure we need to do it, but I think the decision we've made reduces the risk of the negative outcomes. But I hope we don't, yeah, we wouldn't end up with a twenty thousand square foot vape shop because that would, but yeah, it doesn't sound like we would get that. So thank you for splitting the difference and and helping balance the economic development and the what I think of as our trying to preservation of the character of Uptown and um and, you know, so I think this does that.
Any other thoughts, comments? Happy to entertain a motion.
So I would move approval of PC twenty um twenty-four twenty.
Second.
Ms. Webster with the second. All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. Uh Mr. Perry or Mr. Moore? Who wants to call the roll?
I will call the roll then. I'll start with Mr. Cruith.
Yes.
And Ms. Webster?
Yes.
Mr. Arbuckle?
Yes.
Mr. Prithrich?
Yes.
Mr. What?
Yes. All right, the motion passes. Uh with that, we've run out of things to talk about on the agenda. So I will gleefully entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Dr. Prithrich with the motion.
Second.
Ms. Webster with the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.